We lift the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, thank you for this day you've given us. God, thank you for the rain that you blessed us with over the past couple of weeks. God, we just pray that you be with us tonight as we meet. I pray that as we do business for the school district, that we would make decisions that are wise and that honor you. God, I pray for all the teachers and administration and all the students as the school year wraps up. God, I pray that you would give them a great time of rest this summer and that they would be ready to go again next year and that as we search for superintendent, God, that you would just guide us in the direction you would have us go and that you would bring us the right person for this job. Pray once again that you bless this meeting tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
It's all the May 13th, 2024, National Board of Education meeting quarter. We do have a forum. Welcome to all of our employees and all of our guests. I apologize for my stumble because there's a lot of people and I get a little nervous.
Okay, well, we're going to go straight into the consent agenda and I'm going to kind of move some things around. There was some late requests by some personnel for requests for travel and that's part of this consent agenda. So I'm going to ask Malani, if you'll step up and just kind of explain where you're going and what you're going to do and then we'll get Skills USA to go right after that and then that will be voted on as part of the consent agenda if you all will allow it.
Well, we appreciate that. My name is Ms. Malani and I'm a teacher at St. Paul High School. I am going to stick to my script. If I don't, I'll go off script and then we'll be here a little bit longer. So I'm going to stick to the script. I don't know how many of you have checked out. This was Thursday, May 2nd, Thursday, my second edition. But St. Paul High School, we are advancing to Nationals and Nationals this year is held in Seattle, Washington. And let me, let me just tell you a little bit about that. So I'm a family consumer science teacher. And so with that being said, I am in charge of a CTSO program, which is a career and technical student organization. And so that organization is FCCLA, which stands for Family Career and Community Leaders of America. And so this organization offers programs, contests, scholarships, competitive events, and opportunities for members to develop real-world skills beyond college and preparing them for college and career-ready. And they make a difference in families' careers and our community. So it's very community-centered organization. The St. Paul students have been working really, really hard on their Star Events and their projects since September. And these competitive events align with FCCLA's mission to concentrate on multiple roles, including family member, way turner, and community leader. Each event is curated to help the members develop specific lifelong skills through character development, creative and critical thinking, interpersonal communication, practical knowledge, and career preparation. And so 11, we took on April 11th, we took 16 students, two teachers, and one parent. And of those 16 students who were competing, 11 of those advanced to the national level, which is in Seattle, Washington. I've never had so many advance before. I've had students advance every year since, since I took over that position. So it's been amazing. We have gone to Nashville. We've gone to San Diego. Last year, we went to Denver. And now this year, we have the opportunity to go to Seattle. So 11 student competitors and two judges. So FCCLA requires for every three students that you send to compete, that you have to have a volunteer. So there's a few parents. Parents understand that they're going to pay their own way to this trip. And the students, we have been fundraising all year long. But again, we use those funds to take us to state, which was in Hot Springs. And we also, we're not expecting 11 students to advance. So I am here today to ask you for permission to travel out of state with my FCCLA St. Paul chapter, in addition to asking for any financial support that the school board may be able to find. I have no idea what your, what your funds are or what the financial situation here is. But if you could find anything, that would be amazing. I love my position, but I don't receive a stipend. I don't receive any type of extended contract. So I spend hundreds of hours with the students after school, over weekends and holidays. I spend a whole week of summer vacation that is my own, taking away from family and experiences of my own to go with these students, which is fine because these kids are my family. But what, what I mean by that is if there's any money to even help fund some of my trip, that would be wonderful. Our students' trip, our parents have already invested over $11,000 towards this trip. And so I humbly ask you today to consider investing in our students' education at the national level. So I also, before I end, would like to introduce really quickly, Ysalah Cousins, who would like to briefly speak to you about her project, A Very Cool Treat, and Maddie Watson, who would like to speak to you about her mentally, her mental health. Thank you.
Hi. Mine is the red one, Very Cool Treat. So I have two teammates who help me with our servant, which our servant is food innovations. This event requires participants to demonstrate knowledge of the basic concepts of food production by developing an original prototype formula, by testing the product through focus groups, which are case testing sheets. You know, we have them try our product, see if they like it, and then we fix it for what, if they like it or not. And then, and developing marketing strategies. That is what our board says a lot of it about it. My two teammates aren't here today. I'm here to represent our group. And here is Maddie with our other board. Sorry, I'm just shortening her.
My name is Myelin Lawson and I'm honored to stand before you as a recent graduate of St. Paul High School. I'm here to share my passion and commitment to mental health advocacy in our schools and seek your support on our upcoming journey to FCCLA National Competition and Leadership Conference in Seattle, Washington. To address this gap, I have taken proactive steps within our school community. I have organized and hosted mental health assemblies to raise awareness and reduce stigma surrounding mental health issues. Additionally, I collaborated with Arissa Healthcare to conduct a workshop, empowering students with the knowledge and skills to support their peers facing mental health challenges. These initiatives have not only educated our student body, but also fostered a culture of empathy and support within our school. I am proud to share that my efforts were recognized at the state level, where I received a gold medal and the highest score in my category. This achievement demonstrates the impact of our work and the urgency of advocating for mental health support in schools. What we are doing is making a difference. Attending the FCCLA National Leadership Conference is an incredible opportunity for me to further amplify our message to learn from like-minded individuals from across the country. It is a chance to represent not only our school, but also our community on a national stage. Thank you for your time and consideration. Together, we can make a meaningful impact in advocating for mental health in our schools.
That's a tough act to follow. Unfortunately, we're not quite as prepared as FCCLA was.
We're starting all over this year.
We're just trying to get ourselves together. And so we're going to Atlanta and we're taking approximately 15 students to Nationals. We have a few that we're still trying to work out. Just, we got to get this put in by tomorrow on them, but we're trying to work out for sure if they, they're able to go or not. Our dates are June 24th through the 29th. We're taking five adult advisors to keep up with these beautiful darlings. This is Shelby Reed. She is our newly elected secretary for Skills USA. And this is Braxton Bourne. He placed first in computer programming at Hot Springs in April. So he gets to be the first one that I know of from Huntsville that's competing in computer science on national level. Shelby will be competing with the officer team. And we also got Quiz Bowl going. Quiz Bowl is placed first as well. And there'll be five to seven of those students. The team that won on officer team wasn't able to go this year. So we've got second. So we're, while we're able to take our officer team. So we're asking for permission to go. We're going to ask permission to stay in an Airbnb like we did last year. In fact, we actually found the same one we used last year and we're hoping it's going to give us a discount because God likes us. So our cost to register is over $4,000, $200 per student. At this point, we have that. What we're working on right now is raising the money to pay for the Airbnb and to pay for the food because we pay, we cook mostly pork down there. So that we save the student costs. We don't eat out of the morning. We have to mostly on the way down and on the way back and maybe something while we're down, down there. But as we found out at Nationals in the last couple of years in Atlanta, their meals inside the convention center are extremely high. Way too, way too much for, for these kids to be paying. So...
The hotel's almost double Airbnb.
Yes, yes. The hotels, they want us to stay, you know, ridiculous. So we've gotten smart. We take a cooler. We stop and buy lunch meat, different snacks. We have a cooler full of stuff. Take them out to the bus. We scan out the parking lot. We, it's all right. They don't mind. As long as they get fed, right? So we're going to probably need to have a, a bus, probably not a full size. We're hoping we can off it in the traverse and the, in a, one of the short, small, short buses. I hate saying short buses. One of the small buses. I haven't had a chance to talk to Harry about it. I tried to get to him today and couldn't get him. So yeah, I figured I'd try next tomorrow. So we're thinking we're going to need, you know, to raise another five or six thousand to get us there. And hopefully we can do it. But we need your permission to go.
Skills USA is being, Arkansas is being represented by the girl of Jonesboro this year.
So that's, that's not, that's international. So that's in September.
As far as I know, that's the first one of Arkansas.
She's out of Jonesboro area. If you go to Kiosk, anything you want, sir?
We'll have to work on that.
Yeah, yeah. We'll have to work on their, we'll have to work on their speaking ability for the next time. Thank you all.
So as part of the remainder of the consent agenda, you have the meeting agenda for the day. You have minutes from 4:15, from 4:25, from 5:00, 6:00. You have approval of school choice that was in your packet. We have approval of stipend agreements, which was in your packet. That's just a procedural thing that we will institute next year and these requests for travel and district financial reports.
Is there any money that if they're short that we can help?
We, we will do all we can to help. So, Miss Malani, do you happen to know one run?
Yes, I do. Our, our total trip is over $19,000. Again, we already have 11,000 of that invested by parents. I have probably close to 3,000 left in my funds, plus with fundraising. We're having a benefit on June 7th where we're going to have a spaghetti dinner and an auction. And so we're hoping to bring in some of that. But much like USA Skills, our, our registration fees alone, mine are $170. All the adults are $170. But the students, they, their fees are higher because they're competing and attending a leadership conference. So their fees are 305. So just their fees to compete are over $4,000. And then the hotel fees, they fine you if you stay out of the hotel block. It's $125 per person. So when I did the math, it doesn't make any sense to get an Airbnb and have to pay Uber, you know, Uber fees to and from the conference. So we were forced to stay in the hotel block and those rooms are about $255 a day. It's the minimum of a four-night stay or you're fined. And so then you're looking... Yes. And so we're looking at the $1,389 per hotel room and I need five rooms in order to call out our, our travel speakers. Anything for help?
And they, I want to say, they've been working really hard fundraising, different projects. She's done things throughout the school day with staff, meals, things of that nature. So...
We're in a concession stand.
She ran our athletic concession stand most of the year to help out with that. And at our alumni game a couple of weeks ago, FCCLA took the concession stand and did all the proceeds and all the proceeds went to them from that as well. So they're, they're working diligently to make this happen. One of the things I did want to say about, you know, why I'm staying at the convention and not in Airbnb, because of the number of kids that we have competing at different times throughout, it's more convenient to not to have to Uber and taxi. And so they're able to...
It's also safer.
Yeah, and safer, absolutely, to get the kids to where there are different competing times and slots throughout the convention center. So that's, that's another reason why you stay at the convention or the hotel block within a radius to get there.
Also, can you send us details on this?
I certainly can.
And can we post that on the school website?
Yep, sure.
I'll get you any, any financial information you need and I'll get you the...
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. More than welcome to say, but you don't have to. We're going to go to our special reports and we're going to start off, if you'll, if you'll let me, with the student achievement report. Now, there you are. I'm sorry.
First, I want to thank you guys for allowing me to be here, for allowing all of us to be here. I brought some friends with me tonight. It was okay. We just wanted to recognize some awesome, awesome students. I had a thing in your, in your binder with some names, but I just want to tell you a little bit about what we're talking about. So we had two students this fall and seven students in the spring to achieve the Arkansas SEAL of Bi Literacy. So what this is, is it's been in Arkansas now since about 2018. And so these students, they have to prove their proficiency in two different languages.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I didn't have to put this in here, but I do not get somewhere. No problems.
Which tab?
Tab C after special report.
I don't have that.
Sorry. Sorry, we didn't get you.
No, no, no. That's totally fine. No, you're fine. No. So what the, so what the Arkansas SEAL of Bi Literacy is, is that these students... is that these students have to prove their proficiency in two languages, which means that they have to score on, you know, the standardized test. So, for these kiddos, it was mostly the ACT Aspire. They have to score ready or proficient on that. Then, on top of that, they have to take a test in four different categories: listening, speaking, reading, and writing in another language. So, for all of our recipients, it was Spanish. And every one of the nine that I submitted for this year, they all achieved the honor of getting the Arkansas Seal of Bileiteracy. So, super excited for them. It is a super huge achievement. There were five thousand five hundred and fifty-one students from a hundred and five high schools around the state that got it this year. So, they were one of those. So, that would be Alonso Perez and Lily Sprinkle, who is not here. Then, we have Yanexy... Where'd you go, Yanexy? Oh, Alastia. Yanexy Rodriguez. Yahida Olivera is right here. We have Adriana Orduna. We have Christopher Olivera, right there. Esmeralda Zubietta. We have Catherine Navarro. And we have Sydney Navarro, right back there. And then, another, and like I... I just, I appreciate you guys letting me come last minute because I just got their certificates the other day. I found out that there's something called the Global Bileiteracy Seal. So, I took my seven that did it in the spring and submitted them for the Global Seal of Bileiteracy. And all seven of them qualified for the pathway of functional bili- literacy. So, every one of them now have a certificate that is recognized in several different countries across the globe as being bili-literate in these two languages. So, that was something that I actually just found out about, I think about last week. So, we are very, very proud of them. They worked very hard for this achievement. It is not an easy test. It is not easy being chased by me to be like, "Hey, are you gonna take this test?" So, all of them have just done fantastic. So, we appreciate you letting them and their families come to be honored today.
And can I add that, with the exception of one student, that all of these students have been ours since kindergarten?
That's awesome.
That's awesome.
Thank you all for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm very jealous of them.
I know. That's what I told them. I was like, "You guys have a superpower that a lot of people wouldn't have."
Yeah, definitely.
"So, we need to take it and do great things."
Sherry's coming.
Okay.
Sherry's gonna get a picture for...
Same thing goes for you all. You don't have to stay, but you're more than welcome.
I have your Global Seal certificates with me, guys, but in light of the tiny space, I will hand them out. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Robert.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all for coming.
Okay. Now, moving back towards the front, towards Tab A. We have our faculty-staff recognition. This week, we... For this month, we have been sponsored by Integrity, which is a group that is reopening our windows and our lights and all that. They have supplied us with our package. But this week, or this month, I'm sorry, we are recognizing Geneva Richardson, Nancy Reynolds, and Tiffany Smith. I will just read for all three of them what they had written about them. Ms. Richardson, "I do not have enough nice things to say about Ms. Richardson. She is a phenomenal teacher and genuinely cares deeply for her students. And I am so grateful that she had my son in her class. I knew when he was at school, he was getting spoiled by her, which made my life so much easier. I appreciate her making first grade so enjoyable. We loved her so much, we had to stop by at an open house just to remind you." Ms. Reynolds? "She has been the best bus driver since I've seen in twenty years. She is kind, caring, and a safe driver. Helps each day start on a positive note. I can't compliment her enough." And then, Ms. Smith. "Ms. Smith has a cheerful attitude and is always striving to make a difference at St. Paul's Schools. I appreciate all the extra hours she puts in making our school a better place." So, thank you all. Do you want to get a picture of these out there?
No.
But you don't have to leave. Not required.
Ms. Richardson's probably really tired today. First grade field trip.
And then, last but not least of our special reports, we have the student attendance recognition. I did not print out the picture for you. Apologize. I'll put that in there later. We are highlighting students who did not miss a day for the month of April. We had, and for that, we had June thirty-nine across the district who was physically present at school, but randomly selected award prize for that person for this board meeting was Matthew Compton. He is an eighth grader at HMS. I gave him his thing today. He was very excited about having it. It's basically the same thing that was given here. So, you got Andy, which everybody always... Okay. Moving on to the superintendent reports. Tab A is the transfer list. See, we have two. Oh, we found it? Sorry. It was in the wrong spot. I apologize. Tab B is the financial projection report. Our revenue was pretty good, but it was not exactly what we had predicted. A little bit, we do still expect the next month or this month's, now, this month's revenue we should get within the next couple of days. It would be good in the middle of the month to be pretty good. So, we're still predicting, you know, we see the inbound to be pretty healthy by the end of this week. Just to give you some background, we have two months' worth of expenditures left, but three payrolls left. So, there's June. We give a June, July check, and then we have two contracts right here. So, you see that in June, it's usually... Or, yeah, in June, it's usually pretty high on payroll expenditures. But the other expenditures, you don't come down at the same time. We feel like we have definitely over... Predicted on the June payroll. Like, that's more than double of what our payroll was typically to be that we listed there, but we just want to make sure we have the situation. And then, last of this, or excuse me, not last, but Tab C is our enrollment report. See that we were down again in our enrollment. Twenty-two oh four, I checked it today, and actually, we were twenty-two oh five. We gained one student in. Drumroll please. And then, second grade.
One ninety-eight. I printed their test certificate.
So, you know, not as drastic of a drop as the previous months, but it's still a drop in students. I didn't ask for a report this time off of reasoning, but say that it's basically the same. Graduation or GBD or whatever other things that's added. See a lot of transfers or out specifically. If there aren't any questions, we can go on to the administration.
I don't have a whole lot. I wanted to give a shout-out to Skills. They have their signing day the other day. Went really well. Very well organized and just, it was a good opportunity. I'm glad they took the opportunity to show some people our facility. And so, several people got to tour the facility and then got to celebrate some kids signing to go other places and go on to do better things. So, that was awesome. Thank you guys for that. I'm just wrapping up Perkins funding. Trying to get all that stuff turned in for reimbursements and getting that sent off. We did have a site visit for the school-based health clinic. We had applied for the grant, and they came for a site visit. And so, we're anxiously awaiting official word about our grant, but I feel like the site visit went good and our application was good and everything, so...
Do they have a timeline?
Anxiously awaiting that. We're hoping to hear by the first of June, so within the next couple of weeks. Yep. Next week, along with all of the other things that everybody's gonna talk about tonight, next week, we have the Teen Summit, or this week, sorry, Teen Summit on fifteenth, so Wednesday of this week. So, coming up. And then, had our last wellness meeting. Wrapped that up for the year, so done with all that. That's about all I got.
We don't have a whole lot. It's pretty much a blur for us this time of year. You know, we got testing, we're supporting, but then, we also got all the concerts and graduations and Teen Summit and everything coming up in the Activity Center that we're helping facilitate and on top of all of our projects and just daily stuff. Right now, we're just game-planning for summer and doing the best we can to knock out all of our projects and our preventative maintenance stuff that we have scheduled over the summer.
Kind of the same as Bailey. It's just a blur. It's between all the concerts and graduations and everything. We're staying pretty busy. We can't hardly get turned around without something else pop up. Mainly, we've been planning for our summer activities from waxing and just everything else that we've got going this summer. Kind of working on a couple of projects that we'll try to get done this summer, but it's just been really busy for us. Just ready for it to get started.
Well, a lot of you guys have known, we tried to reach the CEP. We qualified for it in October. We did not maintain it through April. When I was able to apply for it, our district fell short of the twenty-five percent threshold for it, so we will not be able to offer CEP for next year. And we're gonna look at incentives for parents doing a discounted lunch meal for those of paid status. And that's all I have.
I have a question. So, are we gonna get anything for that?
So, we still get the... We still get the... It's two different entities that kind of operate in conjunction with each other. We have ESA fund, which we get a third bump in our ESA fund for next year. I'm trying to remember the... I don't remember the exact amounts that we're talking about, but we will get roughly a little bit over...
It's about three hundred and thirty thousand.
Three hundred and thirty thousand that we didn't get this year because we go up in our ESA fund. So, it's categorical fund that is based on your free and reduced... Or, free and reduced number there. We met that threshold. But the CEP, the Community Eligibility Program, taken initial one in October, but it's really not finalized, and they don't look at it and use that number until April. These are, you know, these are direct certifications, students who qualify or, you know...
Migrant, homeless.
All of these other...
Anything like that.
Entities. And the threshold for that through the district is twenty-five percent. Didn't meet that overall twenty-five percent. We had it in pockets at different buildings, but as a district, we didn't meet that. So, therefore, that creates the problem that we basically could not apply for it or justify doing it overall for our... Does that answer the question?
Yes, but that's also why it's so important for everybody at our campus to fill out the papers.
That's correct. And we'll go through this process again next year and, you know, try to maintain those direct certifications and all of that. And it is very important to do it. To do the applications all top.
This three hundred and fifty thousand, is there a certain area that is to be had expended? Is there a certain quarter of the price?
It's a categorical fund. It's probably the most open categorical fund that you have. Like, it has some freedom within it. At least restricted if you want to, but there are restrictions. I thought you wanted...
Well, one of the things we want to focus on is going back to our community in child nutrition in any way that we can. So, we are looking into, you know, can we get... Can we discount the meals? Can we... Is there enough funding there to pay for the snacks? Since we're going to a four-day week, then we'll be providing an afternoon snack. So, will we have enough funding that we can cover that completely? You know, looking at breakfast, just anything that we can do to use those funds to put back into our community. So, that's our number-one goal. And then, we're also looking at some other things. But all of ESA funding has to be used for the students. So, even though it is more flexible than a lot of our other funding, we have to tie it back to our students in anything that we do. So, it's, you know, it will go back to our kids in different ways, but that's what we're focusing on.
All right. We're wrapping up as well. Just like everybody, last week, I was at the St. Paul Athletic Banquet, and coaches did a great job of awarding those and recognizing those athletes that participated down there. And want to thank our best for providing the meal and the food and cooking it for them, too. You know, we have just a lot of community involvement in all of our athletics. And so, just publicly want to thank everybody for all they do throughout the year. Baseball and soccer have their banquets tomorrow night to wrap up their season. So, I think those are the last two, if I'm not mistaken, that we have left. I do want to recognize quickly here at the meeting that last week, we gave out the senior awards. The Male Athlete of the Year this year was Sawyer Owens. The Female Athlete of the Year was Mina Thomas. And so, I want to congratulate them on their accomplishments. Also, we handed out the Outstanding Male and Outstanding Female Eagle. The Outstanding Male was Brady Bollinger, and the Outstanding Female was Hallie Howerton. So, they've all done really well. Wanted to recognize them tonight. And then, last thing I have is just to thank you guys for all the support you've given us this year. It's been a busy year and a lot going on. And I appreciate all you guys do for our students and everything that you've done to help us try to be as successful as possible. So, thank you, guys.
Well, Master Shutterfly over the summer.
The what now?
Master...
Dragonfly.
Dragonfly. It is on my summer to do this. It is.
As if you need it, you can get it.
Yeah, I've got plenty of room for it, so...
My turn. You're up, Chris.
All right. I've got a little bit. I want to start off Friday, May the third. We had our...
we had our elementary fund run. Ms. Natalie was there. That's where we bring our lower elementary out at one time, our K-three kids. And this is a fundraiser for our playground equipment. And we run around the big block behind the gym and I get my high school kids to help monitor and to help. And, and then our upper elementary comes out after them. But I want to tell you that our elementary kids, K-six, ran a hundred and seventy-eight miles that day around the block. And Missy Saylor that was here, one of the girls that spoke, she probably ran five miles that day. She's one of my high school track girls and she just kept running with both groups. And I believe Coach McBee probably got a mile and a half in that day. Now, he didn't run the whole thing, but he got about a mile and a half. So with that, with donations and pledges that day and collecting the money, we raised over thirty-five hundred dollars. So very proud of that. And it's a lot of fun. We play music, you know. I'm the DJ out there and we try to make it as fun and a fun-filled day as, as we could possibly make it. And it's a lot of fun. We had our honor roll, perfect attendance rally breakfast that same day. That's the last one of the year. That's where we, for the third nine weeks, the kids that were AV honor roll and had perfect attendance. Ms. Malani, Fax prepares the food for us and we take them in that morning and, and we had, what did we have? Pancakes and French toast that day and, and things that go with it. And her kids, and her Fax kids do a fantastic job of that. K-two finished MAP testing last week. We're doing the Atlas screener tomorrow and Wednesday for that. We had our senior activity day last Thursday for our seniors. We bring them in, again, Ms. Malani cooks breakfast for our seniors and their families. And then at nine o'clock, we do a campus walkthrough. And we started something, a tradition this year that I want to continue on. We've always had our kindergarten kids lead us, but then this year after our kindergarten kids, anybody that's graduated St. Paul joined the walk. And so we had about eighteen there. I hope it gets, continues to grow and grow and then followed by our seniors. And we do our senior walk and then we have our senior activities, rehearsal for graduation, and of course, graduation last Friday, which I thought went really well. Appreciate everybody that helps out with that. I got to drive the me and work trip today. I, I've done it for seven years. That's an honor. We take our kids to Barnes and Noble and we take them to CC's Pizza and then we take them to the mall and let them walk it off before we bring them back to school. That's always good. And then Ms. Tiffany Smith, that was honored tonight, my teacher, and Ms. Malani, each year they, they collaborate and put on a big show. We call it our art to Fax night. Last year, the theme was around the world. And so the Fax kids prepare food from different countries and then the art kids prepare art from different countries. Well, this year it's the, Bailey, would you bring that up? So that one. So it's journey through the seasons. That'll be Thursday night in the gym. So the food will be prepared, seasonal food, and the art kids will have seasonal art, the four seasons. So if you're not busy Thursday night at five-thirty, come on down to that. Bailey, pull up the FFA.
Yeah, I have graduation.
The greenhouse.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, yeah, there's always something in there. So, you know, Dr. Gregory wrote the grant that we got for our greenhouse. So this past week, our FFA kids have been putting our greenhouse, you know where the concrete slab is up by the highway. Those kids have been working really hard. Mr. Trey Hand and his environmental science class, he told me when he pulled out the instructions, that was like reading a different language. And we got part of it together and realized we had part of it together wrong, so we had to take part of it apart. And so they are about ninety-five percent complete. We don't have the one. The only thing we like is putting the, I call them solar panels, the light, whatever greenhouse panels they are. We just hadn't put those in yet because we're afraid of strong wind till we get anchored that it will blow off. But I really wanted to brag on our kids about being out there and putting it together. They, they made a fun time out of it and they've done an outstanding job. And then the last thing is, you know, like everybody else, trips, trips, and then more trips. We're at the end of the year, wherever days are trips. So thank you guys for allowing us to, to take our kids out and see different places and we really appreciate it. That's all I got.
Well, I don't have a whole lot, so I'll go quick.
Okay.
We've been doing field trips as well. I think a lot to Silver Dollar City. The high school kids are getting their weight in funnel cake. So that's a good thing. I went with the seniors last week, I think it was last week, and they had a great time. And over sixty of them went, so. And they did the best, you know. They had a great time. Wrote all the rides. Mr. Johnson wrote all the rides. He said it was the best time of his life. So, um, we had graduation practice on the eighth, I think it was the eighth. And we did our senior walk through the elementaries. We had to wait a little while because there was some testing going on. Had to wait till that was over. And then our choir had their concert and the band had their concert this last week. And then the skills signing day, that was pretty awesome. There was a lot of kids there that night and, and partners signing those kids. It was pretty, pretty nice to watch. We had our scholarship night on Thursday and there were, I can't remember the number. I wish I'd have written it down. It was over a million dollars worth of scholarships that were reported to our kids, to our seniors that night. And then, of course, we have graduation Thursday at seven PM at the Activity Center. So everybody's welcome. There's, you don't have to give out tickets anymore. Anybody can come. And it's at seven o'clock Thursday night. And then we wrap up, start our finals next week, our semester exams, and it's winding down pretty quickly.
From there, almost about three, I think.
It's on our list.
Yeah.
All right. Middle School, okay. Huge shout out to Tricia Bollinger. She kind of organized our teacher appreciation week last week. And we had some happy teachers. I think attendance was very well because we sat on them just about every day. Cornerstone Bank provided lunch on Monday. FCC LA provided sausage biscuits on Tuesday. We went on a field trip. History Club on Wednesday provided lunch and Methodist Church provided lunch on Thursday. And StuCo, Student Council, gave out Sonic drinks and dessert bars in the afternoon. So huge shout out to Ms. Bollinger and everybody else that contributed to that. So, um, we had ninety-nine percent of our students tested for Atlas, so that was a big, huge win. Last week, we went on our reward field trip to the natural gate. And so whatever money they sent the kids with, they spent every single dollar, every possession spent. So the Nationals, they, they knew what they were doing. They may have killed them. So, but our kids had a great time. It was good for them to get to experience that. Just like everybody else, we got field trips coming up, park days next week, teen summit Wednesday, the Madison County Health Coalition putting that on course. Silver Dollar City, the twenty-fourth, our clubs are going, so funnel cakes and rides. If you're into comedy, we have volleyball match on Monday, faculty versus students, and then middle school faculty versus high school faculty. So that's Monday starting at six o'clock. Coach might, might need the trainer, maybe nurses on that for that on Monday.
A.D.
It may be comfortable. So, other than that, just trying to, you know.
What's happening in the workers' camp?
I don't know if it covers it or not.
Hey, Chris, that's admin staff playing too, right?
Okay, I just make sure.
So, so we're playing eighth grade team first, middle school, and then high school playing high school. And then at seven, middle school staff versus high school staff. So it should be interesting. Other than that, we had a parent night tonight, actually from four to five-thirty. And so had not as much as we thought came out. And so I suggest maybe next year do it, maybe somewhere, maybe a fall festival. But if you need lunch tomorrow, we have hot dog, less than we're hot dogs. So, yeah.
Well, I can, I can speak a little bit to the intermediate. I spent quite a bit of time down there the last several weeks. Did MAP testing two and a half weeks ago. Last week, did our Atlas testing there as well. Giant gold star too, our third grader who on MAP testing day, I had one third grader exit out of the entire grade. So overall, I had less than fifty total makeup tests I have to do. That threw eighteen of them today, twenty-three left. I'm really excited about that. And this is, this is the last week for testing, but right now we've already, well, exceeded our threshold for requirements and things like that. So everything from here on is gravy. We, you know, we just a really big shout out to our kids who showed up last week. And it's, it's not an easy test. It's grueling. It's long. And they really, really showed up. And the person of our staff was there to help with testing and that was, that's always super helpful too. And, and then, just like everybody else, then the whirlwind, field trips and fun and field days and inflatables and water slides all coming our way. You know, the, in the, in the meantime, the faculty's wrapping up their annual data, thinking about and looking forward to next year, structures that'll be put in place there, and kind of brainstorming, you know, best, best things for next year. So to wrap up one thing and start a new thing, it's all taken.
Well, we are getting ready to start our applications for next year for our program for our state categorical funding. And the state in their infinite wisdom has decided that we need a whole new program to do that. So we're working to learn how to use this new application. One really good thing is that it's all one application instead of, you know, this program having to apply here and this program here. I mean, we're all over the place. We have one application for all programs. There's just a different section for each one. So we're having to need next week to get all of those people together in the same room so we can look at that and start working on those. So we'll have those finished by the end of next month. And just finishing up spit testing for spring. We're active enough.
Lots and lots of spit testing. Still trying to finish that up. We have an extended school year program that we offer for students that qualify. And we have about twenty-five coming to do that. Most of June, they'll take Fridays off and it's half a day. And that's just to keep skills that they have. But if they took off too long, it takes too long to recoup that. It's not learn anything new, just stay status quo till school gets started again. So it's really kind of a big number for that, but that's up to qualified. So that's what we're working on right now. Trying to fill in a couple of openings before school gets out. Try to hold those until our numbers are big, so moving that up.
All right. Well, since our last meeting, we've opened up our pre-K kindergarten registration process. Our incoming kindergarteners were invited today for tours. So I know some from Little Fisher's came, some from Miss Kristin, and some just local home schools came and toured. And so I just, I want to add to what Chris said about our community and how much they come together to support our schools and our teachers and our PT SO that works so hard to honor our faculty and staff that work in our buildings, working with the local donut shop, Bobby's, Sonic, who every year gives our staff a free drink. And so thank you to Sarah Hennecut for that every single year, Milner's Barbecue, Farm Bureau that gave a special teacher a gift certificate that she won. And our best, of course, brought cookies. I know Whitney brought cookies. So just, this is a tough time of year for all of us. And so that's, was such a special treat every week. And we're just so lucky to have community partners that come in and support our teachers because they need it this week because we're Atlas piloting starting tomorrow. And, you know, it was, I'm so thankful that we elected to do this because we are learning a lot about what will be required and we will have a very, very narrow window to get the testing done when we come back from summer break. We have nineteen student days to get this done. And so we really wanted to know, even though this is very painful for our tired end-of-year self to be prepared enough that things go off without a hitch come August. And so thank you to the tech department and Tasha for making sure our technology needs were met, for our teachers who've just been fabulous, that just said, okay, we'll do it. Well, you know, whatever these issues are that have come up to navigate around, Ms. Chapel that's helped answer all of our questions. So it's hectic and, you know, tomorrow I may be singing, they may have me strung up on that flagpole out there. I don't know. But I'm just so proud of our staff who are resilient and willing to, you know, do whatever it takes to make sure we're doing what's best for kids. E-S-A-L will take a field trip, that's Ms. Posad's group, will take a field trip to the Amazium this Friday. So I'm super excited that those students will get to experience that. And navigate around our fun and field day for kindergarten in first grade. And this Friday, first grade will take a field trip next Thursday. I think they're finally getting their field trip that they missed out on. They're going to go to Turpentine Creek. And second grade will have their field trip the following day, navigating a water day in kindergarten in the middle of that. And of course, our favorite is kindergarten graduation on next Tuesday at six o'clock at the Activity Center. So thank you to athletics for just being willing to donate the space in the morning so that we can get our kindergartners kind of acclimated and prepared for that celebration. So.
Tough for that, something.
The reverse card.
I don't really want to bring it up, but I'm going to. Someone, I've had a couple people ask me if I was aware of new Title IX regulations. Yes, I am. They have been released about a month ago, which were supposed to be about a year ago, but they probably came out. There's lots and lots of questions about it. And there's lots of states, Arkansas went on, that says, no, we're not going to do that. So there's going to be all kinds of questions and meetings and conferences and things like that. But yes, I am aware. I have them all. I have access to the trainings and stuff that will maybe let school get started. And they're supposed to be in place for August, first of August. And we're still using the company, the ICS, that is just tons of knowledge. So yes, we're aware. We're just going to do what we're supposed to do, kind of follow along. But I did have a couple people reach out asking us. So you can say, yes, we're aware.
There are a couple of state laws that are in direct opposition to the big outline, just so you have a clue. Yeah? So it's not, it's going to be, it's going to be very difficult and that, so we are very. I, my only update is that this is a time period where we may have to have extra meetings just for personnel for, you know, because we're hiring and people signing and school districts do this quite frequently in this time period. So we're aware of that. This is the time when you wind up to wind down. There's no winding down. It doesn't seem like anymore in school districts. But as I said, everything's going and happening all at once. And so very last day of school. So everybody's busy and it'll be fine.
All those kinds of questions.
Sure.
So are we adding a wrestling team? Because I saw something in that.
We have that potential. So like, we are asking, in that realm, we are asking.
Okay. Well, my, my question is about this. So if we add that, is that going to be?
And we co-in.
Co-in. That's what I was, my question. Okay, that's awesome. No, if you add one.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So moving on to new business, if that's okay. Tab A of your new business group is approval of employing personal security virtually as financial advisor for a period of three years. They have been our financial advisor for as long as I've been here and before. So as, from at least 2017, maybe even longer. And what, what this does is that they, you know, they come and they provide our financial training at the beginning of the year. Mr. Level Lady comes and provides it for us. It's at no cost to the district. It just, it, basically, we sign a contract agreement with them or an MOU with them to provide it for us. They do a lot of little things behind the scenes that, you know, they file paperwork for us on our behalf and things like that. The only time it would cost something is if there is a bond issue that you want to pursue. And then they do all the financial documents for that. They do all of it. And then they do all the financial documents for that, they do all of, and that percentage that they get is in there, the fee schedule is in there for you to review. It's very standard, there's not anything surprising about it. Really, it's not worthwhile trying to shop around, because there's only one other true provider in the, in the state that does this. Unless you have some problem with, veritably, I, I don't, I think they've done very well for the district. So I would recommend that, uh, we approve this, uh, for a period of three years, and that way they will, they will be here to provide us with our financial advisement for the next, at least in August, like they normally do.
Are there any questions regarding to approve Perse security veritably as a financial advisor in those school districts? And if not, I'll take a motion to approve her. Oh, favor?
Okay, thank you. Tab B is, so, is not sort of, is what is, what Natasha referred to. We have our federal programs and IDAS, which is our special ed assurances. This is in a different format than what we've typically done, it's through what is now called the Arkansas App, which we hope will be more streamlined, you know, one, one location for all of this. But this is a, this is something that we did last year at this time, this is a standard, uh, procedural thing that we do. We ask for your, it basically is our assurance that we're going to follow regulations as they, as they are, because we're receiving money and funds from it.
Are there any questions regarding the request to approve IDAS federal programs? If not, I'll take a motion to approve.
Okay. Tab C is the approval of the creation of stipends for bowling head coach, wrestling head coach, Bright Futures Coordinator, and Lead Master Teacher Coach. Actually, it shouldn't be coach, it should be Lead Master Teacher, sorry about that. And the salary schedule is highlighted to show where that would be shown on our salary schedule, and the amounts that will be produced with them. And I will start with the bowling head coach, we didn't have this in our salary schedule, uh, last year when we started a bowling team. We need to go ahead, especially since we're planning on continuing a bowling team, need to have it in our salary schedule. Uh, this one is the only one that we would, uh, look to approve retroactively, meaning that we would pay this person who was that coach this past year that amount. And it would be paid either at this payroll or, or one of the payrolls we should. And that's, if you want to know where that one is, is, those two are listed on the very bottom of the third page of the actual salary schedule. Head bowling coach is listed first, they're under the stipend added contract salary. Put them there, because these are positions that are not, don't have an athletic period to provide it for. So bowling is an after-school activity, so therefore, any teacher can do it. Anybody who's willing and voluntary, doesn't have to be a, a paid coach, as far as they have an after-school position for it. That's why it's listed under there. Wrestling, I also would just defer to Mr. Ferguson, who's so much favored having a wrestling program. No, it's joking.
I am, guilty.
We are trying to, to provide, to get a wrestling team started for next year. There is that potential, there is that interest, uh, it has a little bit of cost associated with it, not just in uniforms, but in the, you know, mats and, and other things that are there, and this will be made at the high school campus. So in, in that idea that if we have that, we don't want to come back next year at the beginning of the year and go, okay, we need to add this to the salary schedule, we need to go ahead, we need to go ahead and add it there now, in case we have it.
We have, uh, I believe there's eighteen boys that filled out an interest survey, and then ten girls that filled out an interest survey that are interested in wrestling, and, um, I have checked on the costs, we, we would need two mats, and, uh, both of those would be about sixteen thousand. Shallow has a used mat that we can buy off of them, and then, um, I got a quote for a custom mat that was a little over twelve thousand, and. So, the, the mat cost would be about sixteen, and then we looked at uniforms, about six thousand, and headgear, and that type of stuff. But, um, lots of fundraising for those types of things, but, yeah.
When would it go into place?
Uh, hopefully this next school year.
So it's a winter sport, so the same time as basketball.
Yeah.
And would it go through our school level all the way through our school, or the?
Nine through twelve, yeah.
So, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna ask, okay, explain the minimum maximum.
So in following along with the, you know, last year's approval of the salary schedule, we have a minimum and maximum on our, uh, stipend ranges. And this is, you know, it basically is a minimum of seven fifty to a maximum of, of seventeen fifty, which is what we had in there previous, so we just added to that, uh, that idea.
Okay, so let's say I wanted to be the bowling coach, which one of those?
We have a, we have a system that we use to identify criteria for those ranges. It's broken up into, you know, experience, uh, market conditions, performance, and, uh, one of the categories. Within that, there's actual breakdown, how much.
Okay, so there is a base.
There is, yeah, it's, it's not, there are other schools that utilize something similar to what we're doing. I'll, I'll go ahead and explain, Bright Futures is another one that's added to the top. It is, uh, something that we would add for next year.
It's a program that we.
It's a program that we approved. And it, it, it needs a coordinator, uh, role to be able to make it work, not worthwhile, but as much as well. So, uh, we have identified that potential, that's in the personnel part, potential person for that, uh, so.
And I'll say, like, there's some behind-the-scenes things going on right now to set that up. You haven't heard a lot about it, because we want, when we kick it off, we wanna be hitting different events, and, uh, you know, trying to get donations and that type of stuff, but we don't wanna do that until it's organized and ready to go, so.
And then the last one is Lead and Master Teacher, and that's on the actual second page of the salary schedule, underneath the license of salary schedule. So this is, I kinda hinted at this at some point, so I don't know if I did in a board meeting, but at other iss- at other times where we are looking at, these designations for certified staff are gonna be required for people to be able to, uh, post as, as a classroom teacher, to be able to host an intern or student teacher. Uh, these are already designations within the State Department, uh, that, that teachers can obtain already. But in order to try and facilitate, we only have one and a half or two, I think, in our district right now. In order to facilitate that, we felt like, we presented this to PBC as well, that, um, we need to create this incentive for these people to be able to go ahead and get them a lunch on their certi- certification, uh, on their teaching license, not certificate, I apologize. So you see that there's initial one-time stipend of five hundred dollars that would be associated with this, and if they actually did have a, a student teacher, an intern in the classroom, they would get another two hundred fifty dollar, uh, stipend, uh, at that time. So it's just a way to try to get some people to, to go ahead and do it. There's, there's, there's a potential for several to do it, right off the bat, they just haven't done it. There's a potential next year for several to get it, they just haven't, they have to know that's there and what they would be willing to do, so.
What do you say several, like, per grade level, is it per building?
Well, I'm thinking of St. Paul, they have, they, it, it depends on what you're looking at, too, because there's specific training that you go through, that, that St. Paul campus has some people going through already right now. That would then, all they have, basically, would have to do is, uh, try to add this to their license if required.
And I looked into that with TNTP, and, and they have sent me the paperwork back, the application process, uh, the review, review by them, and then what that, excuse me, what that looks like. So that company came in, uh, with our K-two teachers and led us through, uh, this year. I didn't know it was gonna lead to Lead Master Teacher, it was, it was, uh, part of our, our regulations that we had to do this year, but. So anyway, we, we talked about that as, you know, K-two staff, about being able to do that.
I do not have a breakdown as far as, like, how many you get at high school, at an elementary, or a middle school, at any of these. I don't, I don't have anything, I apologize, but it is something that we feel like you'll see, you'll see happening more and more often in districts, to be able to facilitate the idea of them having interns specifically, or student teachers, uh, specifically as well. We have, we have that opportunity within our district, those schools love to come, uh, bring student teachers here, uh, quite frequently. The, you know, it just depends on what route they're going, as far as what, what they mention. Master teacher's a little bit more difficult, it's a little bit more streamlined to get. Arkansas Leadership Academy, National Board Certification, those things, but that's, that's what, that's what the goal is. The other, I, a part of this is that if it's professional development that we would provide for them already, go ahead and provide that professional development, pay for it, that type of stuff. If it's college courses that we wouldn't do, or National Board reimbursements that we wouldn't do, then that, we wouldn't provide that.
Are there any more questions regarding the question of the deciding? If not, I'll take a motion to approve. Second to make, call a favor.
Thank you. Uh, I don't know that you have a printout for this, on the, but on the same thing regarding salary schedule, the last page of that, um, in order to facilitate, you know, a new hire of a superintendent, and discussing with, uh, you know, other entities, advising it, I went ahead and made a recommendation to adjust, to alter the salary schedule to reflect a superintendent minimum, instead of the locked-in amount that was on there already, it usually was one twenty-eight, seven thirty-seven, which was basically the salary that was, uh, that was mine. But this will give you the freedom to be able to set a minimum of what you, what you expect to go beyond that. Uh, this is a pretty reasonable, uh, for amendment, for superintendent salary in this area. That's the reasoning behind setting that for.
Are there any questions regarding the removal of superintendent salary in salary schedules?
And setting.
And setting a minimum, yeah, now.
On the.
Give me the words, and setting a minimum, if not, I'll take a motion to approve.
So, are we setting the minimum now, or are we gonna set the minimum at a later date?
The minimum's on that.
That is the.
Last in our new business is the approval of contract changes for the St. Paul and, excuse me, St. Paul librarian and instructional facilitator, and reviewing their, this is tab E, and, or, excuse me, tab E, I apologize. Reviewing their, you know, just in reviewing contracts in general. Those two positions are not like the rest of the district, the rest of the district, those two have five extra days added to their contracts, so, meaning that the librarian at all the other buildings, they have one ninety-five, the library instructional facilitators at all the other buildings have one ninety-five. This is just putting those in line with the rest of the district. And since we already issued contracts, it has come before me, that it has separate, that it's something that's lived through. It had been brought to my attention by Bruce many times, I will say that, he's advocating for this, people very much so, but I have not, I have not written that.
So, um, is this an addendum to their current, current contract also? So they're, they're working, they were getting less than the librarian and the?
They were working.
Ah, yes, everywhere else.
Ninety days, yes, ma'am, as compared to the one ninety-five day contract.
So, shouldn't it have been, cause we're a high school school, it shouldn't have been equal? So, do we need to make that retroactive?
No, not necessarily, no, it's just for the upcoming school, at least that's the recommendation.
They probably already networked part of them, see, I'm sure they've already worked them.
I thought it was one more time.
That's why, that's why, you know, once, we should have been equal all along, so that should, we should, I don't know.
That, that's different, uh, in the ordinary contract issue for that, so I, I wouldn't, I mean, I can look into it, but right now, just making a recommendation for the issuing contract.
Could it be, would it be easier to add it as a Skype then, for last year, for, since we just did, we were able to do that for bowling codes, which I get a lot of, but couldn't, could we have done that way, so it wouldn't have to be an addendum to the contract?
I don't know, I'd have to, I'd have to, I won't have a answer for that. We can approve it, well.
Well, we can approve next year, so then we can find out from that, for the next meeting, to find out if we could go ahead.
Yes, that's the easiest way.
All right, are there other questions regarding the question for the addition of contracts as the minutes?
Section seven is personnel.
Are there any questions regarding the personnel recommendations? Is my offer motion to approve? All in favor?
Personnel resignation certified, Greg Harris, HMS teacher and coach, retirement June 30, 2024. I was already approved, but we typically put them on there. So Jonathan Moore, superintendent, June 30, 2024. Paige Egman, HIS counselor, June 30, 2024. Latasha Armour, just bowling coach only for the HHS, June 30, 2024. Janet Eaton, St. Paul Elementary School, retirement, June 30, 2024. Classified, Brian Hamilton, St. Paul mechanic, retirement, June 30, 2024. Jason Bailey, lead custodian, April 29, 2024. Hires, certified, Sheree Meeks, HHS high school soccer, per school, sorry, high school cheer coach, July 1, 2024. John Moran, junior high cheer coach, July 1, 2024. Derek Bodenhammer, soccer coach for the high school, July 1, 2024. Matt Williams, HMS social studies, 190 day contract, July 1, 2024. Joshua Broadway, HIS special education teacher, 190 days, July 1, 2024. Classified hires, Matt Williams, transportation route driver, July 1, 2024. Jeffrey Tucker, transportation route driver, July 1, 2024. Kristen Kelly, HIS special education terror professional, July 1, 2024. Transfers, Jennifer Eaton, from HMS counselor to HIS counselor, two 10 days, and bright futures coordinator, July 1, 2024. Sarah Paulson, from HIS special education to HHS special education, 190 days, July 1, 2024. Classified, Samantha Burnett, from St. Paul cafeteria to St. Paul custodial, 240 days, July 1, 2024. And Crystal Thacker, from St. Paul custodial to St. Paul cafeteria, 180 days, July 1, 2024. I'll get to that when we get set. Yes, sir. I may need to do that. I think I've given mine up. Cody Segres, from computer tech one to computer tech two, 240 days, July 1, 2024. Mark Henry, from route driver to mechanic, and that will be at St. Paul campus, 240 days, July 1, 2024. And then finally, this one was added late. This is a hire for certified Dylan Kirk, assistant football head baseball coach, no school teaching assignment to be determined, 190 days, July 1, 2024. And that is all I have.
Are there any further questions or comments?
Oh, was that one not? I wasn't sure. I don't want to say that. I was, I was needing to talk to y'all about our sped, our sped aids on our buses.
I think if you want to follow the process and the policy to request. I would recommend it, but I don't know what you all want to do.
I just want to go kind of quick.
If you want to give us something, and then we can reach out on the agenda for the next.
Okay, that'll work. And I, I've got several. It's from other, a couple of school districts on their schedule. It's a bus aid, it's our bus aid. And it's for both our bus aids, for Huntsville and for coming to St. Paul. There's two of them, sorry.
Mark Henry, route driver to mechanic, is that at St. Paul?
Yes, sir.
That's, no, that's okay.
Conny, I think means that's.
I was like, oh, is that actually? I'll take that motion to adjourn.